All right, we'll call the regular Russell City Council meeting to order. We lead tonight in prayer by Brother Howard Kaiser from Pro Mountain Baptist Church. We'll follow that with the pledge to the flag. If you'll please rise.
Father, we come before you tonight seeking wisdom as you told us in Proverbs, the second chapter, that if we ask for it, it shall be given. So we ask for wisdom and understanding on this mayor, on this council, and all the city officials that have gathered, for the decisions made here will impact this city for many years. Let them be a blessing to the people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Counsel, you should have the minutes in your packets. If there's no changes to be made, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion. Mr. Wiley.
Welcome.
Second.
And there's a second for Mr. Roberts. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Financial report, Mr. Gerald McCohen. Enlighten us, please.
Financial report for June. General fund revenues were eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. That's one point oh nine percent above our projections. Sales tax receipts were seven hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Franchise fees and permits were fifty-four thousand, one seventy-four. General fund expenditures, nine hundred and five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars, point eight four percent above our projections. We've had one thousand fifteen dollars more expended than received year-to-date. Street fund operations revenues were a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five forty-three, six point five percent below our projections. Sales tax receipts were eighty-eight thousand, seventy-seven dollars. New half-cent sales tax, forty-four thousand, eight twenty-three. Operational expenditures were a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars, eleven point one five percent below our projections. Sales tax improvements were two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine ninety-one. Capital improvements were one forty-three, four ninety-three. Economic development, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three, sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars in new sales tax, five thousand, one twenty-nine in interest. Expenses were fifty-one thousand, six seventy-four on Menard Way. Capital assets, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, five twenty-five, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four oh two was new sales tax, seventeen thousand, one fifty-five in grants, four thousand, nine sixty-seven of interest to be transferred. Expenditures were a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Of that went to city corp, animal shelter, fire department, parks, police department, and airport. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions for Mr. McCohen? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the council to confirm a couple of appointments. First, Mr. John Whiteside to the planning commission. Whiteside is here.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second, we'd like to reappoint Mr. Philip Lee to the civil service commission.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tripp. There's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whiteside. For our mayor's report, how about some good news? Last week, Ms. Klein-Pewe invited me to go with her out to a meeting at Arkansas Tech. You know, the focus of the meeting is their volunteer program. The numbers of hours that they're encouraging their students to volunteer is unbelievable now. Was it sixty thousand volunteer hours for this school year, I believe was the number? Yeah, Emily, I'm sorry, I overlooked. Yeah. Let's let Emily Bradley from Arkansas Tech Community Partner Program enlighten us on that.
So I'm Emily Bradley. I'm the coordinator of leadership and service at Arkansas Tech. So I work in campus life, and I coordinate volunteer work in the community, working with community partners in getting tech students to volunteer. So we do have a goal this year to get students to participate in sixty thousand hours of service. Last year, they logged eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen hours, so we have a lofty goal, but that's not including hours that students participated in and didn't report to us. But when you break down those hours of how many hours they served, that breaks down to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven dollars of monetary impact within the community. We also completed thirteen community impact projects using a program known as a hundred dollar solutions. Community partners we worked with include River Valley Shelter for battered women and children, No Kill Russellville Roost, Ray of Hope Food Pantry, Russ Bus, and Special Olympics of Arkansas. We also had a hundred and fifty tech students participate in our campus-wide day of service last November, which was huge for us, and we hope to get even more next year. We also worked with organizations last year such as Save the Children Head Start of Russellville Dardanelle, Appleton, and the headquarter location here in Russellville, Equestrian Zone, Russellville City Parks, the Museum of Military History, Summer Food for Kids, the Hock Center, Arkansas Highway Department, and we also worked with Arkansas Tech alumni in the area. We also took two, or sorry, not two, ten undergraduate students on an alternative spring break trip in San Antonio, Texas. They gave up their spring break to work with San Antonio Food Bank, where they worked on food security and hunger, worked in a community garden sorting a food warehouse, and together they donated over two hundred hours of service in one week. And then also during National Volunteer Week, which is a big opportunity where we work with the city of Russellville. In April, we had students give back to the Russellville Animal Shelter, Arkansas Health Hospice, Arkansas Food for Kids, which they also work with the backpack program, that's their primary resource, their motive, and then Arvac Food, Inc., and then Bonadilla Trails, we did city cleanup as well. So those are some of the things we did last year. We are working with some of those organizations and even more. We're looking for more opportunities. Again, we do have a goal of sixty thousand hours. So I thank you for recognizing Arkansas Tech and working with us, and look forward to collaborating in the future. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good.
That deserves a round of applause, doesn't it?
Kind of one of the reasons we decided to make that the focus of the mayor's report and the department head report was a phone call. I guess it was a text. First off, it's kind of kicked it off. I'm just going to let you enjoy this presentation. Ms. Jade Collins, she is Ms. ASU. Ms. Collins, tell us about your volunteer focus.
Okay, well, I'll try to keep this brief, but I do have a lot of community service opportunities that I have done, and so it may take a while to kind of get through everything. First of all, I want to thank the city of Russellville. I just competed in Miss Arkansas this past week as Miss Arkansas State University, representing my college, but also representing everyone here in Russellville. And I'm just so grateful to live in a community that has supported me so much in my hopes of becoming Miss Arkansas. Although I did not receive the crown, I still have so many people that have been supportive, and so I'm very grateful. So thank you to everyone. But Mayor Horton asked me to speak about volunteerism and the impact that it can have on the community and kind of my personal story. Okay, and so I always start with a quote if anybody knows anything about me. And so I have a quote, and it says, "Never underestimate your ability to make someone else's life better, even if you never know that you do it." So I'm sure many of you think, you know, I'm just one person. How is my community service going to impact the community? It's not going to matter whether or not I spend an hour on Saturday volunteering because I'm just one person. But you don't understand that if everybody says, "Oh, I'm just one person," I'm not going to matter, then we're not going to have any volunteers. But if you say, "I'm only one person and I do matter," then we have this colossal amount of volunteers willing to engage the community and really make a difference and have an impact. So I started working with the River Valley United Way when I was about fourteen years old, and I can't really tell you exactly why, other than the simple fact that I needed to get some community service hours for my resume as I prepared for college. And I knew that college was expensive, and I couldn't pay for it, so I had to rely on scholarships, and a lot of that had to do with community services, you know, as well as scholastic achievement. But I started working with United Way and began competing in pageants, and I found out that you have a personal platform. And your personal platform is an organization or something that you advocate for, something that you campaign and try to get Arkansans, and if you're Miss America, you know, you get the entire nation, involved in. And so I've made the United Way my personal platform. And in January, this past January, I competed at Miss Arkansas State University, and obviously I was able to win the title, and that was such an incredible opportunity for me to really engage my university in community service. So I started the first student United Way in the state of Arkansas on ASU's campus. And not only has it been able to impact the students, but it impacts the entire community because for any of y'all that know anything about United Way, they have a workplace campaign throughout different, you know, places, businesses, and things like that. So we have not had one in Arkansas State for several different reasons in the past eight years. And in northeast Arkansas, Arkansas State University is the largest employer. So not having those funds coming in from Arkansas State really was detrimental to the United Way in northeast Arkansas. And I wanted to change that because I knew that the impact that ASU had the ability to make, both within the students and within the staff and employees. So, you know, I won the title, and I said, "Okay, I have this organization, this student United Way, and I really need to do something with this." So I worked really, really hard with the northeast Arkansas United Way, as well as with ASU staff, and we have been able to have over two hundred members in the organization. We have about forty-five active members, and that's a lot in a year, if any of y'all know. And so my goal with the student United Way was to just impact the life of one. And that's kind of my mantra for every kind of community service that I'm involved in. If you aren't impacting the life of one person, then you're doing your job. And so I've really worked to do that. And so aside from the student United Way, I've also logged over one thousand hours specifically with United Way and the nonprofits that it supports, and I've raised over twenty thousand dollars for the organization since I became involved with it. And I am very, very excited because I actually just got a phone call this morning about an opportunity to be on the leadership board for the global student United Way, which would be a great opportunity to kind of further my efforts and just engage the community on a global level. And so, you know, through my volunteer service, I have kind of just realized that I do love community service, but I've also realized that it's something that I want to take on into my career. And so aside from just helping others, I've realized my own personal way that I will be touched through it. And so I kind of want to, I say all this, and I don't mean to say this to boast my achievements, because that's not what it's about to me. It's really about being an impact and just being able to help make a difference in the lives of others. And I just want to showcase that at nineteen years old, I'm able to do this. So if I, as one person at nineteen, can do this, anyone can do it, I promise. And I have a lot of people that have helped me along the way, and so I'm very grateful for that. But I kind of want to touch on the reasons and the importance of volunteerism and what you can gain from it, because of course, you know, volunteering is about helping others, but nobody really does anything and not expect something out of it. And the great thing about volunteerism, you help people every single day, and you put a smile on someone's face, but you are also gaining so many different opportunities. And so I'm going to kind of touch on those. And so first of all, you gain new skills. You can think of it as a way, a free training for all different opportunities, whether it be building a house, speaking in front of people, and advocating for a cause, whatever it is, you're gaining these opportunities and these new skills that will help you on in the rest of your life. You have the opportunity to meet new people and stay connected with your community because you can stay up to date on relevant issues in your area. And that's one thing that I have really benefited from United Way. All the money that you raise for the United Way that's in your area stays in your community. So I know where my money's going, and I know what organizations it's going to benefit, and I see those changes being made. So you're guaranteed to reap what you sow, and that's such an incredible feeling. You also have opportunity for personal growth. You have the ability to stay active and live a healthy lifestyle when you volunteer. It's a resume builder. I tell college students that all the time. Volunteerism really does help because, you know, there's going to be about ninety percent of the students that have a three point five or above GPA all throughout college, that have the same degree as you do. But if you have those volunteer hours, and it shows that you've done something to impact your community, employers are going to look at that, and they're going to notice that and see that you have this desire to kind of, to help make the world a better place. And that's something really special. And so the greatest thing about service to me is that you share your vision with the world. And whatever your cause is, whatever you're hoping to champion for, you get to share that with others every day. And so that's what I get to do as Miss Arkansas State University. Each and every day, whether I have the crown on my head or not, I have the opportunity to speak with people about the importance of volunteerism, specifically with the United Way, but also just finding your passion and finding what it is that makes you want to leave an impact in your community and across your state. And I have some statistics for you, because I know everyone wants to hear some numbers. So ninety-four percent of people who volunteered in the last twelve months, this is nationwide, say that volunteerism actually does improve your mood, and I can speak from experience, that when I see someone else smile and I know that I'm helping someone else, I automatically feel better. And seventy-eight percent said that it lowers your stress levels, something that I, again, can vouch for, because as a college student, being involved on campus and having these incredible opportunities at Miss Arkansas State University, it comes with a lot of stress. But whenever I volunteer, it's almost like a relief to me. And I know that it doesn't matter what else is going on in my world, because for these couple of hours that I'm spending with, whether it be with United Way or with another organization, for those few hours, that's the only thing that matters. And so I kind of get to forget about the rest of the world, and that's kind of special. So often, we set out to make this difference in the lives of others, only to discover that, you know, we do make a difference in our own life. And that's exactly what I've come to realize through my time volunteering. And I've actually, whether or not I continue on in pageantry, I know that my impact has come from United Way and from my volunteer efforts. And so if I never grasp the crown of Miss Arkansas, I know that whatever I've been doing is still worthwhile, because not only have I reached my personal goals, but I've been able to impact the lives of others, and that's so special. And I hope everyone has the ability and the opportunity to do that. And the great thing is, you do have the opportunity to do that on a daily basis. There are so many people that need help, that want your help, and it's so easy to find volunteer opportunities. And I encourage you all, if you have anyone, you have any questions about volunteering, or if, you know, you have a specific organization that you want to help with, I would be more than happy to kind of help you out and give you a couple of tips and maybe direct you, put you in the right direction. If you are confused about which organization to start with, United Way's a great one, but there are also other great organizations that I can hopefully kind of lead you in the right way. And so I just want to leave you all with one thing, and it is that I am just an ordinary person, just like everyone else. I just happen to have an extraordinary giving heart, and I have a desire for service. And an ordinary person who reaches their hand out to make a difference in someone else's life really does have the ability to be extraordinary. And so I just want to leave everyone with the, to let them know that they have the ability to be extraordinary as well. So thank y'all so much. I really do appreciate it.
(Applause). Ms. Golden is not here, is that correct? Are you, yeah, there you are. You want to come up? This is Ms. Victoria Golden. She's with Russell School District Summer Enrichment Program.
Hi, yeah, I think I said, I'm Ms. Victoria Golden. I work at Russell School District, and I had the opportunity to do the summer enrichment program that the district offers students district-wide. And I worked alongside with Tracy, and we also brought in the community efforts with kids and wanted to work with them and find their own reason and way to be a productive citizen of the community, and realize that even though they are young and they don't have a job of their own, they can still give back in one way or the other. And so we worked and we volunteered at parks and helped clean up, and we did several other opportunities with nursing home and handing out opportunities and sharing ways that we can clean up, even simple things that don't require maybe transportation or other ways. And so we just wanted to say thank you to the city and especially Tracy for allowing us to work hand-in-hand and give the kids an opportunity to give back.
Thank you.[1236.66][1236.66](Applause). Here comes the dangerous part. Ms. Klein-Pewe assembled a list of some of the volunteers for us to acknowledge. This is by no means complete. We just don't have enough days to do all of that. The Russell High School students and teachers help out a lot. The Clean and Green Committee volunteers helped Ms. Klein-Pewe with a lot of projects. This year, Russ Vegas had three hundred volunteers. That's kind of a signature event for the city of Russell, and there is no way that happens without those volunteers. Within the city, we've got recreation and parks volunteers, Jeff Davis, Doug Houseley, Paul Jackson, Chris Drags, Matt Lloyd, Leadership Russellville, Russell High School FCC LA, Don Carnahan, Jerry Thompson. We've got some adopt a park partners that helped Tracy out a lot. That includes Firestone, Mala, Conagra, Russell Water Ski Club, Sons of the Confederate Veterans Camp 649, and Animal Control, Sandra Winters and Deborah Ford volunteer. You've got Adopt a Street Partners. You've got guys who help coach their kids' baseball teams. You've got everybody that's in a civic club. Nobody gets paid for that. You turn out, you help out. There's a lot of things that make Russell, Arkansas, the special place that all of us love. Just one of them, but a big one of them, is our volunteers from all different categories, all different walks of life, and I think it's appropriate at this time that we appreciate them. That'll conclude my part. Ms. Klein-Pewe, you have our department head report this month.
I'm pretty scripted, but I'm going to go off script a minute. In my past life, I was the vice president of Wellness Company, and they always, we were always asked by the corporations that we went into, "How do you change the health and wellness of the United States?" And the answer was simple. It was, "You start with the children." And it's the same thing with community service. If we teach our children, they will do it better than we will for the long run. And that's why I was so pleased when the Summer Enrichment Program, Victoria Golden, called me and said, "Let me join you in this effort." And they taught those children community service in a million different ways. And the best part of that whole experience, it was when those children walked up to you and said, "I feel so proud of myself. I've helped." So we started out right, changing the world. Now I'll go into the scripted part. Mayor, councilmembers, and citizens, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Much of my job deals with employees, benefits, and basically risk management. However, instead of reporting on human resources in the city of Russellville tonight, which everything's fine, by the way, I would like to take the opportunity to speak to you about another of my job responsibilities. It's been my privilege to serve alongside of Bruce Moore as the co-chairman of the Clean and Green Committee, as well as to serve as a liaison of sorts with community partnerships such as Arkansas Tech, oops, I'm not scrolling, Arkansas Tech, Russellville School District, Lake Dardanelle State Park, River Valley Food for Kids, and other very worthy organizations. For tonight's report, I would like to join with Mayor Horton to acknowledge and thank the volunteers who support these very worthwhile community efforts. The Clean and Green Committee was founded in 2011 by Mayor Bill Eaton. Thanks to receiving a five thousand dollar community grant from Conagra, and then later the city funding the committee's programs, we have expanded to reach throughout the community. Projects have included planting trees in our parks, landscaping around city buildings in several departments, litter pickups, recycling promotions, and so much more. Our volunteers include our past and present mayors, city council members, department heads, city employees, Russellville citizens, Russellville high school students, Russellville Summer Enrichment Program, students from Arkansas Tech, teachers, and so many more. There's just too many to name, and anyone that I've overlooked, please forgive me because it is not, because your efforts aren't very much appreciated. With the help of our volunteers and the support of the Keep Arkansas Beautiful Foundation that provides supplies for cleanups, we have picked up literally hundreds of pounds of litter and thousands of pounds of debris throughout the city and our city parks, and the work continues. I think we have an often underestimated and underappreciated resource in the city of Russellville. It's our citizens, including the youngest of those, and our city employees. Tonight, I join with Mayor Horton to acknowledge the outstanding accomplishments of Russellville's own community heroes and the positive impact that they make each and every day. Thank you.
Committee reports. Finance Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a few items. We've met three times this month, once Tuesday of last week, once yesterday, and then this evening prior to this meeting. Before I get started on the items that were passed by the committee onto the council, I'd like to make two updates. Last night, the committee asked Mr. McCohen to set up a presentation by retail coach. That's what, you know, you guys in administration had asked us to consider. He has that scheduled, just so everybody will know, for July 29th at 4:00 PM here at City Hall, and that's at no cost to the city. That's where this was set up, they'll do a presentation and allow us to ask questions and so forth. But at this time, there is no obligation to the city for this presentation. Number two, also, last two meetings, we discussed a Code Red countywide alert system that the county would like for the city to participate in. Ms. Jackamore had set that up through working in conjunction with the Pope County 911 office. That is scheduled for July 21st, two to four downstairs, and there'll be a presentation on the Code Red system and a presentation on the Civic Ready program. That's a follow-up for two presentations for informational purposes that have been scheduled. On your agenda for the council meeting tonight, item number one, the council voted, I'm sorry, the committee voted to present to the council in form of a motion to proceed with the 820 grant for the airport, but with stipulation that the funds, that it's not proceeded until the funds are received back and a grant reimbursement from the FAA. And that is in form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item, the committee voted to put before the council for approval. They include setting up an airport hangar committee, and the resolution, I believe, is before you, and that was passed in form of a motion also.
Again, you've heard the motion. Any discussion?
Yeah. Why are we talking about airport hangars when it's my understanding the next lease comes up in like nine years? Is that right?
I think that's correct.
Aren't we a little premature to be discussing these things?
Mr. Stuber, as the airport liaison, that's what the airport commission had requested that we do.
Who's going to pick the ones that's going to be on this commission?
I believe it's stated within the resolution, I believe, a council member, the mayor, and then two at large, which the council picks one, the mayor picks one, and two airport commissioners.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Pardon? Was that mine?
No.
Mr. Harris is absent. Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
That's how your motion passes. Motion carries.
It does not. No, it needs five votes.
Motion fails.
Mr. Smith, it's tied at four to four and it can be voted.
Mine was making a difference, didn't it?
That's correct.
Four to three.
You can vote to pass it because it makes five, it needs five affirmative votes.
Due to the fact that this is something that the Airport Commission has asked us to do, I will cast my vote in this in the affirmative.
Then motion carries.
Mayor, next, on the item, on the agenda is the recommendation that the city pay for an air conditioning unit located at the airport for the Dardanelle Emergency Service Hangar in the amount of eight hundred dollars. I will propose items three and four together as they are related. One is the item itself and one is the appropriation. And that is in the form of a motion approved by the committee.
Council, you heard the motion. Any discussion?
Yes. Why, why are we paying for this? I mean, we're paying, obviously after the fact. If, if the city was gonna get involved in paying for it, they should've contacted the city before they got it done. I mean, that would be my thought. And, and on top of that, you know, we, you know, every other word is we're out of money, we're out of money. But, but yet, we keep hopping on to everything that comes before us. I, I know eight hundred dollars is an insignificant amount in the scheme of things, but regardless of what it is, it's the same thing.
Mr. Fraser?
Again, on this item, this was approached, or was approached by representatives from the Lake Dardanelle Emergency Services. This was also passed as a resolution by the Airport Commission to present this to the city for consideration for payment.
What happens if we don't pay this? Who pays it?
Pardon me?
Who pays this if the city doesn't pay it?
Well, there again, it would be up to Lake Dardanelle Emergency Services. They receive, I think, eight hundred dollars a year from the county for operating. The bill for this air conditioner repair was eight hundred dollars. So, that pretty much wipes out, you know, what they were allocated from the county.
But this is a private hangar, right? And it, it doesn't have anything to do, it's for their personal office inside that hangar? Is that not what you?
Well, it's, it's the office and training room that's used inside the hangar. To classify it as a private hangar, technically, I guess, yes, it would be. But when the hangar was built, I know the city did allocate some funds towards the, the construction of that hangar.
I have one other question, Mayor, if I may. Is this a county function that we're dealing with here? This Lake Dardanelle Emergency Service?
I don't really think they, they fall under the auspices of, of the county. I know the county does fund them to, to a small degree. They coordinate a lot with the Office of Emergency Services, Sheriff's Department, the water search and rescue type emergency services.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
Is this a city-owned hangar that's leased out?
It, it, no.
Okay.
Does that make the ruling for us?
Yeah, I think that we can't fund it then. My understanding last week when we talked, that this was a city-owned hangar that is being leased to a group.
No, it's a...
That we can't fund it.
They, they pay a, a hangar lease, just like a privately-owned hangar, I think.
The ground lease.
Ground lease, yeah. But I don't, it's not a, not a city-owned hangar.
It's not like any other hangars we've been dealing with.
Pardon me?
It's not like the other hangars we've been dealing with?
No, sir.
Okay.
Does this have anything to do with the hang, the building at sixty-four and A and O Road? That's a mercy, that's Polk County Mercy. Is that the same thing as this or is it different?
No, sir.
It's different?
Yes, sir. To my, to my knowledge, it is.
It appears the building does not belong to the city, which keeps us from funding it. So, how do we dispose of this?
Do we want to remove it or vote to deny it? But no, we can't, we can't do it if it's private.
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna just move on with it or?
That is fine, off of legal opinion.
Yep.
What are we doing?
We can't fund it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Moving on, a line item transferred from the Police Department to cover some military time, overtime due to apers from several years ago of nine hundred fifty dollars. That was discussed and approved by the committee to present before the council.
Council, you've heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, a consideration of ordinance to waive competitive bidding process for grinding of yard waste at the animal shelter. The committee passed this to present to the council in form of a motion. You should have an ordinance in your package that states the cost is approximately twenty-nine thousand four hundred thirty dollars. And this would waive the bidding process and allow Mr. Vernon to proceed once the, the ordinance plays out, it takes the, the timing of it plays out or if we choose to do the emergency clause.
Council, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is an ordinance, we need to either read it three times.
Here I move, we suspend the rules and read one time, the title only?
I'll second that.
We've got a motion in a second on the suspension of the rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding, employing a grinding company to grind all organic materials, the city yard waste compost facility authorized the mayor and city clerk treasurer to sign all necessary documents to employ the grinding company and for other purposes. This ordinance, if passed, would waive the bidding requirement by the state law since it appears that this will be in excess of twenty thousand dollars. And it will allow the city to enter into a contract where we would chip in more for the grinding of all the materials at the yard waste compost facility. And that's estimated to be at twenty-nine thousand four hundred thirty dollars.
Move it up.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, next on item was recommendation to change the Finance Committee, Committee meeting time to five P.M. on the third Thursday of the month, which coincides with the council meeting, just to relieve some time constraints between the two meetings. That was passed by the committee in the form of a recommendation to the council.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Chairman?
Next on our list, consideration of resolution of the city of Russellville to amend the five-year capital improvement plan to allow Mr. Jones to reallocate some funds to, within his department, to, from one project to another to, to improve or increase his overlay funding and, and some other drainage projects he wants to do. And that was voted on by the committee in form of a motion to present to the council.
Okay, everybody heard the motion and the discussion earlier? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, consideration of resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for an engineering to perform general contractor services for the proposed Russell Animal Shelter Expansion Project. That was voted on and approved by the committee to present to the council.
All right, everybody heard that? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next on the agenda from tonight's meeting was a consideration of resolution to accept a bid for a removal of a structure. Off of Mr. Smith's concern, the committee, I believe on a two to one vote, voted to reject that bid and to rebid it, just as informational purposes.
Okay. Everybody heard that? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Tripp?
Excuse me.
Mayor, next, we had some appropriations, seven of them. Dealing with the Oakland Cemetery, Police Department, Parks and Recreation Administration, police and then Public Works. Those were discussed and voted on for passage from the committee to present to the council in form of a motion.
You heard the motion?
Mayor, for discussion, if you don't care, on one item here. One item, number seven on our sheet, is appropriation for an issue or an agenda item that we had on last night as far as moving utilities on South Glenwood as a request from First Baptist Church. During last night's meeting, it was brought up about possibly a conflict among some council members that attend or are membership there. And while I am one of those, I had previously, had already considered this, but this is not doing anybody a favor or, or, you know, promoting anything. This is more of correcting a problem or finishing a project that was done three years ago. And for that reason, I will be voting.
Mayor?
I'd like to ask for a roll call on this issue.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Call the roll, please. Seven? Item seven, Mr. Tripp?
It was all, it was all the appropriations together.
Okay, all the appropriations at the same time.
And Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, two more items and I'll be done, I promise. Consideration of ordinance providing for levy of a one-quarter percent sales and use tax within the city of Russellville. This was discussed for several meetings, several weeks, and it was passed by the committee in a two to one vote to present to the council in form of a motion.
Okay, you heard the motion? Discussion?
Mayor, on this, just like to designate for everybody's...
It's...
Read by title only?
Yeah, we need a...
For the first reading only?
First reading only, I, I would prefer if y'all are comfortable with this.
This is a one-quarter cent sales tax on, in addition to what's already in place and this funding will go to the general fund only.
That's correct.
Mayor, can we have a roll call on that?
We need to get a second or do we have to suspend?
We need a second on suspension of the rules. Or just a first reading?
We've got a motion to suspend for the first reading?
I move that we suspend the rules, read one time.
All in favor of suspending the rules for the first reading only? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mr. Smith?
An ordinance providing for the levy of a one-quarter percent sales and use tax within the city of Russellville, Arkansas, and prescribed by other matters pertaining thereto, this ordinance, if passed, would levy a one-quarter cent sales tax, sales and use tax here inside the city of Russellville to be used for general revenue purposes.
Discussion?
As it stands, it will require two more readings.
Two more readings. If it's okay, I would like to point out and, you know, just for everybody here and wherever, we discussed having some town hall meetings. I know this is, it's always sensitive when you have to go for some kind of revenue enhancement. The council has generously gone along with that. We will be setting up some town hall meetings as we move forward and, and there will be two more readings on this. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mayor, last item, consideration of ordinance calling for a special election of the city of Russellville on the question of levying a one-quarter percent sales and use tax within the city of Russellville and that election date would be November tenth, twenty fifteen. That is in form of a motion passed by the committee two to one. And I would put that as for the read by title only, for the first time only.
Okay, we've got a motion to suspend the rules for the first reading. Need a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? We've got a motion in a second to suspend the rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Smith?
An ordinance calling for a special election in the city of Russellville, Arkansas, on the question of levying a one-quarter percent sales and use tax within the city of Russellville, Arkansas, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. This ordinance, if passed, would call for a special election in the city of Russellville. That would be on November tenth of this year, submitting to the voters of the city the question of passing a one-quarter sales and use tax to be levied citywide.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion at this time? We'll have plenty going forward, I'm sure. Mr. Chairman?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Stuber? Chairman of Personnel?
Mayor, we did meet. We took no action, so I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. We're moving to unfinished old business, item one. Consideration of an ordinance defining mobile food vendors. This is second reading. Would we like Mr. Smith to read word for word all twelve pages or?
I'm, Mayor, I would, I would move to table this.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain?
Abstain? Yes, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Okay, Mr. Smith? We're tabling this until?
Next month.
Next month.
Next regular council meeting.
Next regular council meeting. Brings us to item two, consideration of an ordinance prohibiting nuisance odors occurring in the city. This is a third reading. Do I hear a motion?
Move to read for the third time with a title only and a short explanation.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wiley. All in favor of the motion to suspend? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mr. Smith?
An ordinance prohibiting nuisance odors occurring in the city of Russellville, Arkansas, prescribing a penalty establishing definitions and a procedure to receive investigative complaints, empowering certain officials to enforce the ordinance, exempting certain entities and for other purposes. This ordinance, if passed, would set out the definitions in order to... to regulate odor nuisances that are generated in the city by certain places within the city. It sets out a procedure for reporting odor nuisances to the city. It empowers the code enforcement official to make investigations and cite the offending entity generating such nuisance odors, and sets out penalties for the enforcement.
Mr. Smith, would you kind of go over the detail with us as far as the, requires multiple complaints within a period of time?
Yes, it, to be considered what's called a significant odor complaint, it needs ten odors from different households that are independent from each other within a five-day period. It, that's the, that's the, kind of the tipping point for the code enforcement official to make an investigation, and also to be considered a significant odor generator, and then that would be kicking the prohibition for these, for this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Eaton?
Well, we, where we can make some discussion at this point on this item.
Okay, I'm good.
Well, technically, not unless it's up for a motion and second. Y'all suspended the rules, but there's been no motion to adopt or any, any other motion pertaining to this.
But that's all right.
We would need a motion for how to dispense with it, I guess.
That, that's okay. I'm...
So, say that again, Mayor?
We need a motion to adopt whatever, to put it in play.
Okay, well, I'm moved to adopt.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wiley?
Now we can discuss.
Now, discussion?
I don't know, but I'm, I'm in the, with the opinion that if we needed ten complaints to start with, we've already had those today.
We had three today before nine o'clock.
Well, some of the rest of us did also.
Yeah, well, these were the ones documented, and...
Yes.
That does not, I don't know how many we had through the website or other means, but that's three pointed to. It came in on our phone.
Mayor?
Mr. Stuber?
I, I would move to amend this ordinance, item A under section eight. I, I would, I would move to remove item A under section eight, which reads, "The city and city corporation shall be exempt from the provisions of this ordinance."
I'll second that.
Which one?
Okay, we need a motion on the amendment to remove...
That's what they just did.
They did?
Yeah.
Oh, he did move, yeah, all right, so we need a vote on it. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was flipping to section eight. Okay, on the amendment to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Could we have a little discussion? I got lost in that.
I did too.
Right now, we have a motion and a second to delete section eight, item A.
Which says, I'm finding...
That the city and city corporation shall be exempt from the provisions of this ordinance. So, the only thing that we're voting on right now is whether or not to exempt ourselves and city corporation from having to comply with this ordinance.
I just feel it's wrong to pass a, a law or a regulation against someone else and not, not abide by it yourself.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree. Any other discussion on that?
Well, just to make sure, so when we vote, so if we vote to amend Mr. Stu, do what Mr. Stuber says, which is take them out or leave them, make sure they're in it.
My amendment is to take, take, remove item A under section eight, to remove that from this ordinance.
Okay.
And then, item B would become part of that as the only exemption, is that right, Mr. Attorney?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, then, all in favor of the amendment to the, to the ordinance? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So now, we're back to the main motion.
Mr. Smith?
Mm-hmm.
I, I remembered what, what you and I discussed before the meeting, that we couldn't remember our notes just when we had talked to a resident about it. So, this requires ten calls within a five-day period to be...
To qualify, well, to qualify as a significant odor complaint, there's still, the code enforcement officer still upon complaint can go out and investigate, make his own decision, independent of that, though. So, that's just, it's not the only qualifier, it's one of, and then there's, he's going to have to make a subjective opinion, and that's kind of why this is in here, to kind of help substantiate a subjective opinion. If the city moves into getting a meter of some sort, then the meter is going to be set on this ratio that's within the ordinance, but that's still, you're still looking at buying it, training, certification, so this is kind of a stopgap until an objective meter reading is used.
What is going to ensure that within this five-day period, all ten calls are geared towards the same odor or the same facility?
That's going to also be required by the code enforcement official going out and investigating the calls and determining their credibility based on the source. He's gonna have to eventually tie those in.
Will he, will he go to the facility, or like, I mean, the odor has been really bad this week?
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I recognize the odor. Will he come to, like, my residence, or will he go to the facility? Because sometimes maybe the facility may not smell, whereas it's gone up through the air and it's all over town.
I believe he will go to both.
Both?
Yes, go to the complainant and also to what he suspects, or the complainant suspects to be the odor generator.
Okay.
Mayor, has they, have they been in contact with you?
They have not, Mr. Wiley. I've had two phone calls from other industries. We sent in the ordinance, have not heard any, anything back from them as far as any concerns or whatever, which indicates to me that, you know, they, they understand that it's fair. We're trying not to be overly burdensome, but we're trying to address a forty-year-old problem, and that's all we've had.
Thank you. I got a question for Trey. Is, is there any state statute that touches on this?
Yes.
That's for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought you said Tripp. There's not one that specifically does, there's just general police powers that are left to the city to address nuisances, and so this, under that state police power, the city is acting by passing ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city residents.
Call for the question.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Let's allow a little bit more.
Mr. Smith? Is this gonna require a code enforcement officer to go out at all hours of the night, seven days a week, or only during...
No, he's, he's set up to be Monday, I mean, he's set up as Monday, Friday, eight to five, so that's the only enforcement that this will receive, unless the council's looking to address it twenty-four seven.
My next question, I think, and my last question is, my concern on this is the ten calls in five days. I'm in, I'm in more support of this than not, because I do think it can be managed, it's just a matter of want to or willing to, because we're, again, we're not trying to drive anybody out, we're not trying to cut any jobs, we're just trying to do the overall welfare of the whole community here, and all we're asking is for people to be community partners with us. But at the same time, I'm not, I'm concerned that this opens the, the door of possibility too far, that one facility might get the blame for, for somebody else's odor with, in that count of ten within a five-day span. Is there any harm in, in restricting that to a shorter time period?
No, it's, if y'all want to change that, if you want to amend it and change it to whatever time period, that's fine. This is, it's just a starting point.
I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm just not comfortable with ten days, I mean, ten calls in five days.
You want to do a shorter time period?
That's, that's the way I feel on it.
Okay.
I think it's more fair to the facility in a shorter timeframe.
One day?
I would, I would not, I, I don't think that would be a reasonable thing.
Say what we're about to say.
This is, the first, the first, we don't know how something of this nature is going to, to unfold. If that, I, I would say that we leave it as it is, and if it looks as if that's not reasonable, then we can amend it. But I, I think the, the timeframe, I, I mean, I just, I don't know that that's really the issue here.
Mr. Smith? One more question just thought of in this, this discussion also.
Now, you, Mr. Tripp, one question?
But this goes back to a conversation Mr. Smith and I had previously had. What's gonna, what keeps one person from making more than one complaint?
Because it's gotta come from different households within that time period, so they have to be independent, you can't call your sister or whatever, and, and family members to keep calling in.
I'm, I'm gonna make this amend, this motion for amendment.
Well, I, I have, now y'all, now you've stirred me up.
Well, hold on, I'm gonna make a motion, please.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a, and, and you guys may not agree with me, and that's fine, I'm just not comfortable with five days. I would make a motion to amend that to three days.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we'll be voting on the amendment to change the days, number of days of recording from five to three. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who's gonna call it?
You're okay? I believe Mr. Eaton was the only one we're recording as a no. Okay. In that event, then the amendment changes from the reporting period from five days to three. Any other discussion? We've got a motion and second.
Yes, we do. We do have a...
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk.
This is gonna be on the three. Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Counsel, I know how much y'all have struggled with this, people outside these confines probably never will appreciate how hard this decision was to make, so I appreciate your attending to this matter. Since we've struggled with it, we fought with it, and we finally made a decision, I would entertain a motion on the emergency clause.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion in a second to enact the emergency clause. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Could I ask who made the motion?
I believe it was Mr. Wiley made the motion and Mr. Eaton seconded, is that sound right?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
No.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton, calling for a motion, carries.
Mayor, for clarification, that was only for the emergency clause to enact it immediately, correct?
That's correct.
So, so otherwise, it would have taken effect in thirty days, but with that vote, it takes effect now, basically.
Takes effect now. We've got a little bit of housekeeping to do, we have to get an olfacto meter, is that how you say that?
Yes.
Some other things like that.
Could I ask one question for clarification? We voted on all the amendments, so did we, and do we need to vote to adopt?
It has been, there was a vote to adopt.
We did it individually, so...
Okay.
It's as amended.
Thank you.
Item three, Chairman Tripp, have we already taken care of that, old business three?
We did the appropriation, which, this is the discussion kind of, but we did the appropriation through the finance committee report, that is gonna supply six thousand or so dollars for watering of the soccer complex.
Okay, is there any cleanup work to do on that, Mr. Smith?
Not that I'm, no, not that I'm aware of, no.
Look, this is one.
Mayor, may I?
Mr. Tripp?
Somebody brought it to my attention, and I apologize for just now realizing it, but I believe we have an issue, and Mr. Smith may say that it can't be addressed now, but we, I believe we were supposed to have a second reading of a special event ordinance. I'm as guilty as everybody, I'm forgetting that, no, not catching it on here.
I can't hear you speaking.
A special event ordinance that we had a first reading of last month?
Oh, yes. I know somewhere in there, we were discussing having feedback from the special events committee.
I thought we, I thought we passed that last month.
I didn't, oh, so, but we may not have, Mr. Wiley.
I thought it was just a one-time reading.
I thought we passed it. I thought we voted to leave it up to the, the heads of departments, didn't we, chief? That's what I thought we passed.
If it needs to come back, just put it back on next month's.
We'll dig into that.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I interject something here? I believe Mr. Tripp was correct in this. According to item five from last month, it does indicate that this ordinance will return to the July agenda for a second reading, which we approve these minutes at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay. Well, can I make a motion to suspend the rule, read it title only with a short explanation and pass it tonight?
That we would have to have, do we have to have a late agenda item, since this was not on our agenda at this time, Mr. Smith?
Well, it was supposed to be, though.
Yeah, I know it was.
So, I think, I think we can do it since it was supposed to have been on here, it's not like we're adding something that is not supposed to be, and it's not.
And we do have that information in front of us. Okay.
Okay, so are we gonna suspend the rules for the remaining two, or are we gonna suspend the rules for the second reading? Go ahead and have...
For the remainder two. I feel like we need to go ahead and pass this.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Eaton. Let's take our time with this part here, is everybody comfortable since it's not in your packet, you've seen the ordinance, y'all, I know you... You've seen the ordinance, y'all, I know you've studied over it.
And the recommendation of the committee was to let the heads of departments be in charge of this along with the mayor.
So, all in favor of the suspension of the rules, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Tripp, is opposed?
Only because it was not advertised on our agenda, so if somebody wanted to come and address it, they didn't have-
Did pass?
The motion to suspend did pass.
Make the motion, we adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wiley, second, Mr. Eaton. Any other discussion on the ordinance? In that case, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
No.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Talk to him.
For the record, should we just identify that as old business four?
Yes, I mean, that's what it would have been. Mayor, does that take, excuse me, does that take five or six votes to pass?
Five.
Five, I think.
Okay.
The suspension of the rules would be.
Takes six.
Yep.
Motion carries.
Everybody comfortable?
Yes.
New business one. Resolution requiring the rehab by agreement for 407 South Independence Avenue.
Motion carries.
We've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item two, resolution to issue a special use permit to allow a mini storage facility at 3,800 block of East Main Street. This was unanimously approved by the, or recommended by the planning commission.
Motion carries.
Second.
Second, Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, brings us down to public comment period, and we have first, Ms. Laura Beth Tripp, that would like to speak. To the microphone and state your name, please.
Okay, first of all, I want to tell you that I'm not here as a councilman's wife, that's just a perk. I'm here as a mom. And I get emotional and really nervous talking in front of grownups because I love kids. I want to take a minute to read something to you that I have received a lot of response to. Since marrying a city councilman, I have had the privilege of seeing a different side of our local government. This is not necessarily because Mark talks about city issues at home, but because I'm more aware of what's going on in our community. It's also not uncommon, as you guys all know, to have people approach us in public and talk about city issues. I'm naturally going to know more about what's going on because I'm around it more. Something I've noticed is that there are several people in leadership positions within our city who tend to place more emphasis on adults than our city as a whole. They can't seem to invest or find money when it is needed for youth-related items. When suggestions are made or questions are asked, these same individuals act or react in a manner that is not okay. They make very rude gestures or make inconsiderate, sometimes very hurtful comments. I have actually witnessed one of you rolling your eyes and sighing loudly at a question that was asked during a council meeting. If our city were to invest in our youth the same way that we do adults, would that not be a greater investment toward our city as a whole? We want our youth happy, we want them to stay, and we want them to bring others here as they grow into adulthood. Why are we pushing them aside as decisions are made? I would like to mention a few of the many issues that myself and several others in our community have concerns with. These are all really touchy issues, and they are all going to be touchy issues to you. So, I'm going to apologize ahead of time for stepping on toes. The Aquatic Center. I would be interested in knowing how many of our citizens realize that we're actually only getting an indoor pool with maybe a therapy pool and maybe an indoor kiddie splash pad type area. Most people that I speak to, they think that it's not going to be that. They have no idea that it's all indoors. They think what they signed up for, what they voted for, is what they are currently driving to Clarksville and Alma to use. They think that's what they're getting. Our aquatic center indoor pool should be more than a conveniently located facility that caters to special interest groups. I'm not saying that we don't need a place for swim meets or water aerobics. We do need that, our community needs that. But, we need something that's also going to cater to everyone in our community. Why are we in such a rush to build a glorified indoor pool that's only going to benefit a fraction of our citizens? That makes no sense, and as a mom, it's very discouraging. As an educator in our schools who sees the kids getting excited, it's disappointing. Our baseball fields. Our son, Mitchell, plays baseball, so this really hits home to me. I grew up with my younger brother and Mayor Horton's son playing baseball. I was at the fields, and they were nice. Our current situation is disheartening. It's bad enough that many of our families now play on travel teams that rarely use our decaying facilities. The funds that our local economy could receive from tournaments are being spent elsewhere. We have many family friends, many, that travel to play ball in other towns. No one likes playing ball on fields containing numerous holes with sparse, pitiful grass. It's not uncommon to hear people compare our fields to the field on the movie, The Sandlot. I've called it that myself, I'll be honest. Several times this spring season, the restrooms at Hickey Park were not even usable. I personally saw this and couldn't allow our daughter to use the restroom. It was gross, it was sad, and it was embarrassing. Our softball fields, which are often utilized by adults, are great. It's a wonderful facility. I would like to encourage you all to visit both fields after a really good rain, and you'll see what I'm talking about. There's a huge difference, and it makes no sense. I'm a girl, I'm all about softball, but it's not right. I will mention that at the softball fields this spring, when our daughters were practicing, they weren't allowed to turn the lights on. As a parent, that made me really uncomfortable. It's dark, and there are balls flying by their heads. Is that safe? Surely, something can be done. The soccer fields. This is something that someone recently approached us about as we were having lunch. And it wasn't the first time I had had someone approach me about it. I found it really interesting that when we went to watch the fireworks on the fourth, we were sent to the soccer fields. There are several decision makers who have been against making much-needed improvements to these facilities. Why are we encouraging the public to use them for anything other than soccer if we aren't even willing to properly maintain the facilities so that they can be used for their actual purpose? Soccer. Would that not cause them to become even worse than they already are? I've witnessed the frustration of soccer parents over not having adequately watered and maintained facilities for their children to use. I don't blame them one bit, and if I were a soccer parent, I would be just as frustrated. I want you to know that I'm saying all this not because I'm angry with you, not because I'm angry with our city. I love Russellville, this is my home. I grew up here, right across the street from Mayor Horton. This is my home. I'm saying this because I don't want to live elsewhere, and I don't want my kids to live elsewhere. I don't want the kids in our community to go elsewhere. I feel that as a whole, we need to make some major changes. Our voices and their voices need to be heard. Our children should be seen. There's a huge communication breakdown, and it needs to change. Please consider them, please consider the youth in our community. Please personally research, communicate, communicate openly with the public. Please visit the facilities prior to making any decisions that you make. This isn't just about right now. This is about later on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Tripp. We also have a Cameron Manning that would like to speak tonight. Would you step to the microphone, please?
Good evening. I'm Cameron Manning, and I'm going into seventh grade at Russellville Middle School. I know, you're thinking, why is a kid standing here? I may be twelve, but I know enough to realize that me, my brothers and sisters, my friends at school, we are the future Russellville. As my mom said, we need to make some changes. Those changes, we need to be involved. We someday are going to be filling your shoes. People my age are probably going to be running for city council, running for mayor, maybe even sitting in this room. I'm here tonight to ask if the decision makers of today could please consider us when making their decisions. Because the decisions that they make, they're going to last much longer. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to speak. I would entertain a motion, a motion to adjourn. Thank you.